All right, well, it's time to welcome everybody out. Color planning commission leading to order. Do you see Commissioner Smith, he couldn't make it tonight? Send a special welcome to the mayor. Thank you for filling out and watching us through our thing. That will move on to consent item number two, which is consent approval of planning commission minutes from March thirteenth. So you have a chance to review those. Any issues, concerns? Now, I entertain emotion.
I motion to approve the planning commission minutes for March thirteenth of twenty twenty four.
I'll send that moment. Motion will take it all in favor. That was all of us. It passes. That moves us to agenda item number three. She's a public hearing. For comments for and or against Harrisville ordinance five thirty three and ordinance amending the general plan map and official zoning map for certain parcels on West Harrisville Road. So the first of the public hearings. Going to take a moment to review the rules for public hearing. They give an opportunity to hear from you. So this is, this will be your opportunity to state your opinion, share your thoughts. Public hearing is not a discussion, so feedback in regard to your question, the comments may not be provided within this meeting. Please remember to state your name clearly and speak into the microphone when taking part. Got a record. Everyone will have three minutes. We've been trying to pull over the time limit so we can hear from everybody as we would like to. Let everyone have the chance and not to take all night. We do have a couple of public hearings. Please be respectful, no shouting, pointing fingers, no applause. And if it does happen that anyone is disorderly, they may be removed from the meeting. Right, so there are rules for the public hearing. We need to open the public hearing before we hear from you. All right. I think we're ready to open the hearing. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing? Motion to open the public hearings.
All second.
All right, motion is second, all in favor? Aye, aye, aye. Jenny, can you take us through this application per minute so we can help everyone know which of the two we're on and some of the backgrounds?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. We received an application a number of months ago for this rezon application. The initial public hearing was held on April thirteenth of twenty twenty two, where this item was tabled. Since then, the concept plan has changed, shifted a little bit, so we are presenting a new concept plan to the city. And we're here to take a couple of comments regarding this because of change. So the change is to change the northern portion of this parcel. The lower portion is already empty one manufacturing and the north portion has been A1 zone because of the west and it can't, but the parcel number is the same. It's one parcel under the county's records. So we're here to take some other comments on this public hearing.
With that, we will open it up to the Belt Lake. This is your opportunity to come and speak. For and or against our proposed general plans and zoning map amendments related to the parcels you can see on the screen.
I appreciate the chance to come tonight. I also thank you gentlemen for what you do. You know, it's not a fun job. I also hope you realize that us as residents realize that you're our last line of defense against some of these developments sometimes. And we have a small voice and you guys that are back, I say, oh. First question I have, and if you guys answer this for me, you don't answer questions, I don't know how you're under meeting. I was under the assumption the state code required you include the summary of the facts of proposed modifications. Anytime there's a land use in your public hearing notice, I didn't see any such thing. I also heard from a lot of residents around me, there wasn't a way of a meeting or which property was concerning. So that's concerning to me that maybe I'd like to know how that notice was done if the general public really knew what was happening in the night. That was my first question. The second question, according to your own code, have you already approved a development concept for this project?
This isn't a discussion, we're just here to hear you.
Okay, so you won't, you won't answer that question as well. Okay, so my question was, was there any hazard management concept approved as per code eleven six oh two zero prior to the zone request? Does the rezon conform with the general plan? And this rezon request doesn't meet the future land use map that's provided in the general plan? Or the proposed future zoning map? The general plan also states that seven fifty west and West Harrisville Road are already heavily congested and need improvements before future development. How will this development, both heavy truck traffic? Increased traffic be handled on these two roads? You know, the problems that are already there, that's already been noted in the general plan. Have you done any traffic studies for these areas? How will the traffic be handled with this? Because usually manufacturing, large heavy truck traffic, so if we looked at that, what's that going to do to our infrastructure? I'm sure our companies looked at the water needs, we looked at the swamp water needs, more of that very chose and how that's handled. The general plan also says that we'll want major access in this area or access in this area to major roads, so I assume that's eighty nine. Or consideration. It says in the general plan that the city will consider the attitudes of the owners and residents of surrounding property. And if so, what's the consensus of these things? What's the problem with this area? The other item in the general plan states that in A1 zones, there is a need to preserve agricultural rural settings and to protect them from incompatible and conflicting uses. How does this development do that in A1 zone right in the middle of it? I didn't see anything in there that addresses that, other than the code says that that will be done in the general plan. And that's just a few of the questions I have, so hopefully guys will consider now and give us some future feedback as residents before this is approved. Don't know these conditions of the next, making, appreciate you guys' time, but that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Hi, I've never been, I've never been to a meeting like this before.
We're glad.
So I do own property that
Say your name.
Oh, my name's Sushal. And about six seventy West Harrisville Road. And I got this notice that, and I don't have any information of what I mean, tonight's the first time I knew what they were changing the zone to, but I don't know what the plan is or what it's to be used for. And I'd like to know how to get that information before how do I, how do I get the information on what's what they're doing?
City and we go through the problems we've had a public hearing on this in the past as well.
And I bought the property, it was my parents' home. And I bought the property last year. And so I don't, I don't really know what happened before that. But it does concern me because there is, I used to wire shares behind my property. And if that's what you're talking about, then that concerns me more than if it's it's down the street ways. So I will be looking into it, but I do wish that they go back on, on and have another discussion when more people, I guess, realize what, what they're asking to do. And so that we can go more into it and then have a voice or a better opinion.
Thank you. My name's Paulo, but I've got some similar concerns than, than that have, that some of the other people may have had. One of the biggest concerns I have is is I don't know how many parcels there will be or how many car traffic, how much car traffic increase or decrease this is going to be. It really wasn't spelled out in anything I've seen. So it's a concern for me, a real big concern, because I know that some of the people I've been talking to on North Harrisville Road, they aren't going to want to see a lot more traffic on that road. That's one of the reasons why they bought homes on that road.
This is on seven fifty of eighty nine. Okay, so we've got two public hearings. The North Harrisville Road is the other one.
Okay, I, that's one I'm concerned about. Is that going to be later on?
Yes, I will be.
Is it, because I didn't get, I didn't get as much information on that one as I did on this. So you will, you will, okay.
Absolutely.
We'll see.
My name's Trent LeBert. I reside in fourteen seventy five North five eighty nine. I am a property boundary to HHI's property. Couple of things, I've had multiple run-ins with them and they're, they're not great people to deal with. You know, they act like everything's great, they want to benefit the city area. I've had way too many run-ins with them, which kind of piss off the humans. The other thing is I run a multi-million dollar fabrication business. That's what I do for a living. And has anybody looked into the environmental study of what this is going to encompass to Eric though? I would really like to ask that. Because I can tell you, coming out of Salt Lake County and Davis County, of the operations that I run, that we admit the pollutions that are admitted, the HPAs, maybe they have the volatile organic chemicals that come out of there, and you also have the dust burn. And I know they're painting over there, and has anybody got a total plan of how they're handling emissions or look at what are they producing now into Harrisville City? Before we make decisions like this. I understand that they're making a benefit and this is, you know, I'm sorry if it sounds fun and to the point that they're going to help the city out with a road and things that are going to happen over there. But you know what? I didn't build my home. I've been here for fifty five years. And I have been a resident of that property. My mom and dad are still residents of that property. And you know what? We zoned agriculture for a reason. Not to change it, and I just want to know what benefit does it do for Harrisville City to take agricultural land and rezone it for agri, for industrial use? I can tell you the reason why it is, is a business runner and somebody that runs a multi-million dollar business, you can buy agricultural land cheap and they get the city to change it over. And you're not held to the same opacities and everything else and dust and requirements and everything that are happening that you are if you were put into one of the other zones. And I think we really need to look at that. And I'm just telling you that from plain and frank, I do it for a living and I know what it produces. And I know what I have to deal with when it comes to Salt Lake County, Davis County. So I would ask you, you know, make them go somewhere else and put it in, you know, commercial and, you know, where fabrication and that type of business is being handled. And hopefully they're being monitored even when they put it in those areas. Thank you. I appreciate everything. Thank you.
Mike Delpass, four sixty seven West Chad Lane. I have a couple of things is when we got the paper, it had no address. It had nothing to tell us. I'm here to find out even what it's about. Which I think if you look at the people here, you'll notice that most of them are here for the other one that had the address. This had no address. I didn't know what was going on. I'm here more to get that knowledge and my other comment is let's not ruin our agricultural ground, let's not change it. They said, why? Everybody in Harrisville lives here. We were here before HHI and let's keep it agricultural.
All right, this is all. I'm sure you want this, seven twenty eight, seven fifty west and the little house in the middle of this moment. My biggest concern is last time you had a public hearing that this was tabled. There were, this was packed out the doors and I did not get a notice that I saw, I got the notice for the other one. And if I missed it, I, last time people were talking. So I feel personally that there was purpose for that. Not one person was in favor of it last time. There was a whole packed house. Lots of discussion and there's not that many people here. I don't think they just forgot about it. I don't think they were properly notified and I think that that is not well representing our city. Obviously affects me personally. I knew that when I was planning, that's what happens to land, but the long-term plan for Harrisville showed keeping agriculture, which is when you talk to everyone in Harrisville, which is a small city. That's what they want. And I think that that's what we elect people for to represent us. So if that's what Harrisville wants, I feel like that's what they should. Again, does affect us about a whole lot personally, just with the bright lights, things like that. I hope those are taken into consideration. All the traffic, all the things people talk about, but the biggest thing is just you're representing the people and I think it's pretty clear what people want. I mean, like I said last time, it was super full and I'm pretty confused at why it's not this time. I think if people knew what you're talking about, it would be, but that's a big concern.
They can motion to close the public hearing. I'll motion to close public hearing. I'll say, all in favor? Aye, aye. That brings on the agenda number four, which is discussion on this item. Ordinance five thirty three, amending the general plan map, the zoning map for certain parcels on West Harrisville Road. You know, that's that's where eighty nine is called the area. All right, that's probably where some of the confusion may have come in. Jenny, do you have anything else? First, we'll move to the staff report.
Happy to review the staff report.
Well, I should hear that.
So as was mentioned in the staff report, that this is a legislative decision and this is where the commission and the open of the city council have broad discretion in taking legislative, taking legislative action. So that was put in the staff report. The reason the request is being brought to the commission and the city council is the lower portion of this parcel is already identified as manufacturing.
So are those split zoning? I guess just one parcel. So just to clarify, so everybody knows the upper portion in the lighter pink is the new, the lower darker is already zoned. Just for anybody out there who may be questioning. And it's one parcel? Yes, it is one parcel.
But the northern portion is the A1 zone and the lower portion is where the current business is.
Well, there's a street address for the upper portion.
There is no street address. Because that's parcel association. The plan, the concept that's required for a zoning change is this concept plan, the property that fronts the highway is already commercial, it's been resumed commercial. And as you're aware, the city complex parcel here is where our public works buildings being built. So this zoning request is to bring the north portion into the same zoning as the lower portion under this concept. So some of the I'm happy to address some of the comments that you very nice discussions. So some of the comments regard transportation access. Transportation access for this northern portion will be used by this new access road on that eighty nine. That's going to be driven by the city. Bring the federal fund appropriations. To gain access to the highway. And we have a lower portion of this identified as a secondary access that would like. There was a question as to what has been approved. Nothing has been through a formal approval process. The item was tabled in twenty twenty two and hasn't come back for discussion outside of staff's discussion with the developer. There hasn't been any city action taken on this and it would be until after a rezon request has been granted. To address the noticing issues, this is a state requirement. Mandates that we need the public notice requirements on the public notice and our website, we went above and beyond by sending notices to all residents within that three hundred feet circle. That is no longer a requirement, it used to be, but it isn't anymore. But we continue that practice trying to make sure that we're noticing as many people as we can. So our public notice requirement has happened in the past. Except for the commissioners to leave that open for public comments until it, then when it goes to the city council, then we're happy to do that and take issue. Their comments regarding the transportation issues on West Harrisville Road seven fifty west, the city's already received funding, federal funding and WACUP funding for the white it's actually something to take on this year in twenty twenty four and equals home in twenty twenty five. Because of just some timing issues with the city. And so we've already received approval for the YG project on West Harrisville Road. We have also applied and received the first step of funding for phase one of seven fifty west, which is from West Harrisville Road north to seven fifty west. That's in programming for federal funding by the year twenty thirty. And we've applied just recently, we've sent in our notice of intent for the WACUP funding to match that for the first phase of seven fifty west. So the city is in process of trying to receive the funds to address the transportation issues. We did recently adopt our new transportation plan that includes the upgrade of seven fifty west. Certainly during the development process, issues such as stormwater. This is a manufacturing zone. It's not an industrial zone. The uses are somewhat different there, but anything that's proposed for the manufacturing zone would have to be unallowed use under our manufacturing ordinance. That would be proposed by the developer to include in this.
Thank you. What all these concerns for commissioners?
Anything Jenny about emissions from HSI?
So we can, we can be covered under this because there are no existing emissions from that section.
Right, was there was one concern expressed about?
Right, and they're telling that, and they know they they're not going to have any, that's what that would be done when they build and when they get their permits.
Right, but the emissions you mentioned, I don't confine themselves to the lower portion of that thing. It would be wherever. Do we have any statement from each HSI about their emissions?
I guess that can, are you asking about the existing business?
Yes, and what are the, what are the cities requirements for emissions for?
That's tenured.
I'm going to jump. But the words differently, they're just about the existing business, not.
Yes.
So essentially, I can't say for exactly what they're doing in their existing business, because that's not, but we don't fall under the the state. The city doesn't, isn't big enough, you're all under the state statute that we monitor that, that is a state monitored industrial permit. And many times there's like manufacturing, trucking companies, so on and so forth. We do make sure that they're conditional use permit. If they have to have a conditional use permit, that they have that industrial permit and it is monitored by the state. We just don't meet the criteria. We're still considered under ten thousand residents. We don't meet that criteria.
But the, but the state does.
The state does, yes, the state has their own.
I think that's just important for all residents to understand.
And any business that's developing on here, building anything, producing anything would then have to get the appropriate permits and be subject to the state's rules on that.
Exactly.
At the moment, there aren't any.
Just want to make sure residents are still.
Portion of it.
What is Harrisville responsibility and what is state responsibility? So, thank you. Appreciate that.
I think also Jenny, if I'm right, I don't think any of this land is currently used for agriculture, right? It's all just open candy land.
It's owned by HHI.
Correct. They're not, they're not doing any agriculture there right now, correct?
There has historically been cows on there. I confirm that. We're leaving by property, but I'm sure the neighbors to what's leading to this scene there.
So their, their plan is to add more business on this property.
They're, they're planning to eventually expand.
And we desperately need more business in the state, right? More in the city, correct? Yes, that's what I meant to say. Yeah, so I think that's, I mean, we have to look at the broad picture here. We all didn't like our tax increase last year. And in order to alleviate some of these personal tax increases, I think when you're be willing to look at businesses, they could, right?
So most we borders things that aren't A1s, well, there's a wrap all parcels, but there's the city complex, which is A1. There's going to be buildings there and then it friends eighty nine and all those commercial properties that are on there. So all, so only just because of this, that we can add business to the city, but also just like it did years ago, likes me that the parcel is split. Because it makes it harder for someone buying that parcel to know what they can do with it. They have my parts always split half commercial and half residential. Which half do I get to build my house on? Or use for my family and the other half, those wicked of rules. But it is one parcel.
Okay, so the reasons for would be to tie it in with the existing manufacturing of a Logan. So we're just making everything in that whole part of the group. And maybe the same is already bordered by manufacturing and will be commercial, commercial, that's the word I kept thinking cosmetic and commercial. Uh commercial, um and there's not a whole lot that can be done with that land other than if we were to zone it so that it's consistent, yeah.
And the rest of the traffic will go on the eighty nine, we will let proposed roads and with the city's road for tailwind through to our city complex, giving access to them.
So have we secured that portion of the driveway on the north side coming in from eighty nine? That the future city offices and stuff.
So that's a partnership with the the current owner, uh that would go through a subdivision process. Uh but again, none 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 of, we haven't taken any of those steps yet, there's no approvals that have taken place there.
So what is, how much land are we actually looking at that's not so much fashion right now?
So we didn't break out the northern portion of the applicants here, I don't know if they know what the northern portion is. We, the vast majority of the parcel is the southern area, which is already a manufacturing, but it has that sort of footage.
Is in residential fifty four. It's a fifty four, fifty five twelve acre lot.
However, hold that fifty five couple acres.
Fourteen acres would probably kill.
That border there existing manufacturing.
Some ordinance that are good residents of this state can understand all of the facts.
The question about notice, but I got the notice in my email before I got any of this. Cause I sign up for notices from the bank commissions and council and all that. I got the notice and it had enough of an address to know where it was. Nothing's been approved. The future land uses are, but we're changing. We're amending the general plan map, the zoning map, which will if we do that, change what it is on earth, like a map over there. So that well, it doesn't mean that that's favor changing it, well, I believe we'll change it. Hard to preserve any A ones, no use there. Yeah, fourteen acres, right, right. So that's the parcel, it's the same parcel, you kind of have to buy the parcel in order to use that for something else. And where it currently doesn't have road access. That would be difficult for someone to use A one or unusables. And they'd be bordering all the commercial here, which.
Yeah. I mean, it makes sense to to tie that in and we make it all one.
Yeah.
So we don't have these split zones anymore.
How many other parcels do we know that have split zoning?
So we tried, when we adopted the twenty nineteen general plan, we tried to identify any of the areas and put the zoning consistent with parcel lines.
Okay.
Because it's really difficult for us, the only reason this has a clear definition is because of the government's grid, another area is without a legal description, which defines parcels. It would be really hard to identify with different zones, same parcel. And so we tried to clean some of that up, we don't have, it was, it's sure it's still there. But it is an exception, it's certainly not something moving forward that we we might clean up those areas, right, of the future.
Yeah. Now, we we tabled this back in twenty twenty two. Because we wanted more input and we wanted more direction from the residents and from the city. And of course, ultimately, whatever we decide um needs to be in the best interest of our community. And at large. Is there, as you have talked about it, I mean, there there's clear reasoning why this would be important. To be to be consistent. And what are what are some of the reasons from the state's position?
Well, if you look at it from an appeal process, they would have a pretty good argument um to say that their the vast majority of their parcel is already owned manufacturing. Um from a variance perspective under state law is um the majority of it will be able to use their property to make the majority of their property is being used or their neighboring properties that have the same zoning. Um certainly, those are considerations that city would well.
Right. And we did have an impact in minutes from the last time, so we should be going through the comments from the other neighbors at that point as well. From what I've done, we're concerned with what happens once pavement gets over and houses and dishes.
Yeah, there there was a question about making sure that people downstream got their water shares. Well, and I'm sure given our city's efforts to make sure people are not robbed of their water shares. That every effort will be made to make sure that it's.
As well with the those buildings to the point there and from those buildings, right?
Right, so, as we look to the future. Yeah, I just want to make sure that residents know that. Whatever happens in the future. You will make sure that we protect your land rights. Okay, I mean it. Based on what we've heard, based on what we understand. That's between the commercial and manufacturing, there's only, there's fourteen acres there. So it it makes sense to make that all manufactured. And just unify that, the whole area.
Two years ago, this northern road was a big dream. Whereas now, with the public works going in there, they're going to have the road access that will help that be more useful. Or usable in some way. Like that road in itself, the base. So that's the one parcel that still gets me when all of this is said and done, is the buses A one in between this property and the commercial and the city. Because they're about to have a road. Have traffic, police sirens and all of that.
Yeah.
But that about when city property, well, public works and all their fun and everything is already going through. So that's already going to increase the traffic and truck traffic and truck traffic going multiple ways sent through. Best parts will never considering. That I don't think there's too much of a.
Well, I think I graphic wise, it's gonna be J demographic, it's not gonna be like I'm graphic here, so.
There's a possibility it's nineteen hundred. For the most part, maybe that's accurate, yeah. What do you think about that?
They know together.
Well, with me, this is where the diversity of our commissioners, because I am an ag guy. And I hate to see our A one disappear. Um but like you said, the property is already owned, it's already owned. Without this piece, it's it's tough to, it's tough to it's tough to hold an A one to me, but I'm for the A one and, you know, not not placing my vote, that's who I am, I I want to see more of that. And it's tough for me to eliminate an A one, but you know, where it's already owned by the by the owner, um yeah.
And he wants to use it.
And wanted to use her.
I mean, I I think it's in our interest as a city to make sure we have as much open land as possible. So that our children, so that we can, our children can enjoy open space and so that is a priority for us. As a planning commissioner and also the city. So I just want to make sure that you know that.
I just don't know how you restrict this section of the same parcel to.
It just doesn't make sense to keep it there, it's so limited and it's such a small piece of land. Yes, which makes sense to.
If they were not dividing it out, it'd make more sense to do it here, but they're not, it's one parcel and
Well, I think I'm I'm of the opinion that we If we do approve this, I just want to let you know that that um it will be passed on to the city council and they ultimately will make the decision regarding this.
And there's still a lot to go into it before it gets built. Which I think is what a lot of the concerns relate to. There haven't been any of that. Okay, um you want to make a motion to try and find one?
I'm not, I'm, we're not ignoring your hand.
From what I'm understanding is
we have outside public hearing.
And number two, Harrisville City is not going to take any part of trying to release any of the emissions away.
Blue. We're not in a position to continue the public hearing, but the permits and all the pollution will be done by the state.
I would say you're leaving all the state, they're not going to require it.
The way the law worked. As they stand, so. We will follow the laws the way they are.
Okay, well, I will motion to approve the ordinance amending our general plan map, official zoning map. An approval ordinance, three, three.
The second, I'll say that motion.
And we included that, uh staff memo dated May first. Also.
Are you okay, is that getting that?
If a motion in a second, all in favor? Nate, are you opposed? Nate, we got one opposed, that's three to one. We'll send passes. Will you be in this division? That moves that's to agenda add number five, is the other public hearing. Or comments for or against Harrisville ordinance five fifty five? Which is a cluster development plan for property located approximately eight sixty three North Harrisville Road. The same rule applied to this public hearing. Um and I'll take a motion to open it.
All motion to open the public hearing.
All second. All in favor?
Thank you for bringing that up, I was just gonna ask.
Jenny, is there no presentation on what's being presented first?
Jenny, would you like to introduce this public hearing and what we're talking about?
I'd be happy to, I'm happy to go through as much detail as the commissioners request.
Thank you.
Read the staff report before we get to the public. That will give them more information on this.
Absolutely. So the product is the exhibit on the screen here, the subject property. And on December ninth of twenty twenty one, the project management committee due to now the patients for cluster developments for property located approximately eight sixty three North Harrisville Road. Identified as the parcels included in the packet. Uh staff has been working with the developer in the last several years to address the floodplain requirements and come up with a viable concept plan for proposed developments. Outlined in the sample board of the requirements for a cluster development. The general regulations require ten acres, this property is only thirty acres, so it qualifies. The application and ownership of a cluster development has to be initiated by an application uh by the ownership of the property included in the packet or letters authorizing the the developer to represent their interest in the application. The development has agricultural property buffering existing homes on all adjacent sites to this proposed project. The public hearing is being held to need to receive the public comments associated with the ordinance. And the bonus density is outlined in exhibit E of the master development agreement. The way the cluster development is written is there's a base density identified by property is included in the developments. And the bonus says the points are given for the things that they need in a bonus density required. Another cluster development. The master development plan, the outline in exhibit D one of the master development setback type of building size of each lot that will meet the minimum so the closest zone, which is R one ten, a zone for development. The master development plan includes twelve acres of open space, which will be dedicated to the city that is outlined by the floodplain in seven AM. And ownership of the open space will be dedicated to the city, which is allowed under the ordinance. And it will be maintained, developed and maintained by the city. The design and site standards and renderings are outlined in exhibit C two of the master development agreement. They included by single family housing types, just a reminder, these are examples. And the during two, they're they're not exactly like these homes, depending on who the builder is, just a reminder there. The development also includes C C R. The development sites, as we reviewed previously, and a lot of developments are closely associated with the R one ten standards in our current code. The utility service availability letters have been received by the utility providers that are required. And Harrisville City provides stormwater sewer and secondary irrigation for this area. It will be a requirement of this subdivision to incorporate into the former special service district or secondary pressure service. And the subdivision's export will be required in accordance with title twelve, the subdivision ordinance of the Harrisville Code. So after the analysis was conducted by the project management committee, the application was moved forward as a co-commitment for recommendation to city council.
Thank you.
Yeah, this is, again, your opportunity to come forward and share with us your opinion, your comments for or against. This is the parcel on Harrisville Road.
Would that five homes or ten, five homes?
It's, so they've got five potential homes, they're fifty eight lots.
Yeah, five types, so potential.
Gave five examples.
Yeah.
Yeah, there'll be, I think, twenty eight in the lower portion.
They don't have those.
Under another.
The number or the second, which you can get on the city website.
Well, there was from the city. Eight on the lower portion.
Yeah, so thirty on the phase two, which is, because of phase one's eleven point eight acres and phase ten is twenty five points.
Give us your comments, your concerns.
Well, we have a lot of.
My name is Robert L A seventy five, I'm a little confused. I'm sorry to check this out, so. This is an A one property. So you're reselling it? This is a reason?
No, this is a type of development.
This is a type of development allowed upon an A one property.
Yeah, I. But it allows the local to, to accommodate the requirements, especially the requirement. You put in fifty eight lots on, on how many acres, thirty, thirty acres?
Yeah, it was only thirty.
Would you like us to hold it?
Where did you wait for it? Okay, this is, I didn't get it. We circumvent the, the, so, sorry. I know how that cluster works and without the town, that is super complicated by giving a great picture world. Okay, so my first question, there's a, we are, we are circumventing A one, uh, requirements. Secondly, is there one entrance going into this property? Oh, there's two. Can't see for two. Okay, so if there's only one entrance, how does that meet a fire code? It can't be five hundred feet without, without rivers. Road cam will find a people without fire, no way out. And I have two loads there. Okay, uh. Secondly, we didn't want over there to lose, then there's no police traffic to set up for an ad hoc. We have a lot of traffic which drives fast along that road, it's a speedway. And I don't know what to do about your problem, it's gonna add more to this problem. And, uh, and we, and we're concerned about it because we don't have sidewalks, we don't want that. People walking that street, they don't, they don't, when people driving eighty mile an hour, pick them up. So that's a real concern about that. So this is, uh. I'm with everyone here, we, many years ago, we looked at this, rezoning the master plan, we kept anyone in place because it was important for the city. And, uh, I'm sorry, this isn't meeting the A one requirements, this is just way of helping with fifty eight lots back there. And, uh, I appreciate my landlord, that's a good thing, but if they would, they bought it and. And they thought their thing is caught controversy around their place, it gets you around, it gets you around the requirements that. I, I think that is unfair to the citizens who. So, uh, so we have a lot of A one on the, on the south side of it, North Harrisville Road, all that properties A one all the way around there. We need to start allowing that happen, other people coming to buy ground to do clusters and something similar to Sprow. That exactly can happen, you said in front of them, you do this, you tell them. People come, they're still doing the same thing. And, uh, we double up all they want now. But that's just what I was thinking about, and I think that we moved here because we liked the old ground. Now we probably have some vision. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Anderson, I live on nine eleven North Harrisville Road. And, uh, like, um, Bill just said, this was A one. That has to be considered certainly before we put development down there. Now. Have anybody, have any of you been down there? And noticed the water level? There are flowing springs there. And many of you who've lived here in, in Harrisville for a period of time, realize that when. Orthogon was paved over, everybody in the colonies here had to put some pumps in their basements. What is your plan to mitigate the water in the homes that you're planning on building? I spent a little time in Australia and they put their houses on stilts. I don't think that's going to fly here, but it is a problem. Okay, you need to make sure, if you're gonna do this, which I am absolutely totally against. Although I understand I'm old and I'll be gone shortly, and you'll have to do something, but. There are issues, if you have a developer come in here and put together something like this and he leaves. And the houses sink, who is responsible? I cannot afford another four hundred dollar, four hundred percent tax increase. Which is what happened when we decided to build. Those are things that need to be considered and I think that you really need to go back and look. At the complexion of Harrisville. It's a very quiet community, I know you're talking about a lot more, a lot more tax money. Uh, from manufacturing and industry and stuff. Be careful. I don't want sidewalks on my road. I want to have people walk up, up and down the street. I want to be able to ride my horse up and down the street. And I want to have the space I need. We just started our irrigation turn, turn this year. And there is going to be water running into the back of those houses. At my, on the end of my property, I'm at the end of the ditch, me and a few others. And we have a catch ditch, a wastewater day track down there, runs into the swamp on Ben's property. So these are things that you're gonna have to rebuild that. And do not let the developer off. The hinges because you can't afford taxes either to rebuild those homes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm, I'm saying ever, like, if anything, I'm very proud. And putting all on say that I appreciate, I appreciate all the work you do because it's amazing. I certainly have the planning commission, working with them for fifty five years and I know. But it's, it's not you, but you represent people in Harrisville, who sometimes develop, we can leave, they're totally. Because they don't understand everything about the land, it's a piece of ground and it looks like there's nothing on it, it's bigger than this building. Now I want, and you receive my letter.
Yes.
Yes. Well, I, I've been telling you, I, I mean, that, if I'm tiring down there, it isn't that. And what a lot of people don't realize is, is that it's not just wet on top, but you go down into the ground with it. It's wet, have you been, you driven over to answer it, tell Blaven? We, yeah, but then you know what groundwater, high groundwater table looks like. So, um, I'm but hate to, I'm but hate to see people build homes and then. That, that they're just wet. And I, I, I don't think that's fair to them and. I'm very opposed to this because it's just a deadly emergency. And that you'll take that into consideration when the general plan was posed. It was proposed as open area because this really, all of this, it really is the best use part. There were some places in the city that were just plain, you know. And we'll take that into consideration, thank you.
Am I in the right meeting now? I apologize for jumping up and talking about something. Anyway, uh, I, if, if this goes in and there's only one entrance in and one entrance or one exit, I'm opposed. That is a, that is a showstopper for me. Uh, I also would like to know a little bit more about how the traffic impact is. I know some of the people who were living on that North Harrisville Road, uh, they were, they're gonna see quite a bit more traffic. And as, as, uh, I live on highway eighty nine, so I'm used to it, but they're not. Uh. What really bothers me is the road noise on highway eighty nine, and I hope that that could be addressed at another meeting. And then, uh, I also have some, uh, concerns about the runoff water as well. Uh, I know that I, I've been over that pro, piece of property and, and I. There's waterfowl birds out there right now, making nests and things like that, they don't do that on dry ground. It has to be a suitable, uh, rookery for the, for the young. Uh, and if you're considering building homes on it, that's something that. If you, if you look at the foliage that's around there. You'll get an idea how, how wet that soil really is. And so, uh, with that, I, uh, if those concerns can be addressed. That was, would be what I'm interested in.
Hello, I'm David Chad. I'm digging eight, five, seven North Harrisville Road, right next to the property that they want to develop. Um, he mentioned the wetland and the birds, I showed Paul it the other day, we walked out in my, my pasture. Look over and there's geese over there, we hear. Storks over there, there's ducks over there. I walked over there with my dog and been in water up to almost my knees at sometimes. It went, it's really wet and the water's flowing. My wife and I moved here from Salt Lake City three and a half years ago. We fell in love with the property that we bought in Harrisville. When we looked at it with the Realtor, there were two girls walking their sheep down the road. No sidewalks. People walking up and down the road, the, the traffic is getting worse and worse. So, uh, you know, I am totally against this. We moved up here. Bought this beautiful place, this nice little ranch. And my wife and I called it our last place before heaven. Um, if this goes in, it's gone up for sale. I gotta go find a place out in my country, I was born in the country, or I'm always fine. I just could not stand traffic. Fifty some homes going in. School buses is just, and just, it's just not what we're moving for, I'm just, I'm moving. My wife has been sick of it, she can't even. So. I'm just totally against it. Thank you, thank you.
Sorry about. My name is Linda Gass. I moved in here when my son was two weeks old. He's seventy four now, or forty seven. I was telling him about this, at one time, all of this property that they're thinking about building, the cluster homes. Was designated as wetlands by the federal government. We might have to check into that. Because, uh, in order to change that, you have to go through the federal government. But at one time, my son and my son-in-law. Was hired by one of the people that built a house down there by the Stevens, Stevenson's, I forget which one it is. To build a fence out of, and they were going to use, uh, railroad ties to build it. As fast as they could dig the hole that the railroad ties ended filled up with water. They said, he said they took, turned shovel in the, the. The water out of the hole and then put the railroad tie in and they tried to cover it up as fast as they could. But those railroad ties kept getting popped out from the dirt and out from where the fence was being built. It is very wet over there. And, um. If you've ever had water in your basement or ever had water problems. It, it's almost overwhelming and I, I worry that people coming in. They're thinking, oh, this is the neat place to build a house, yeah, it looks like it, but a neat place to build. Whatever kind of house. And, um. But they don't realize, because they're not familiar with, with the area, they do not realize. The water situation, how bad it can be here. Um, we also have had, um. One of our, it, it had cows living on it for years and then. The lady that owned the piece of property sold it because she was elderly and, um. Everybody was really anxious to get ahold of it so that they could put houses on it. And that's been almost four years ago. Do you know how many houses are on it right now? None. They dug some basements, they dug, dug some, um, not basements, but foundations. I was walking past there this afternoon, every one of the foundations that they have dug. Have water in them, at least two inches right now. Now I realize it's been a wet period. But most of the area around here, the water level is very. Very high. So. And I'm like ninety percent of these people, I've lived here for a long time, I like. Walking down the, the road, I used to ride horses down the road, not so much anymore. And not just because I'm old, but because those cars go with my fast now on North Harrisville Road. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, hi. My name is Michelle Walters, I'm at three sixty West North Street. My property is to the west of all this development, I'm right on that line down. I agree with everything that everybody here has mentioned. Um, I applaud the few of you that. Are for A one, I mean, where's it all going, the minute we let a cluster. Development go in, every bit of our A one is likely, why can't we just stay in phase there, it's gonna be irrelevant at some point. I thought at one time I had read somewhere some of that area was conservation too, I could be wrong, but I mean, you'd have to look it up like the one gal had mentioned. Um, and I too, like a lot of these folks, walk my property daily, if not. Twice a day, and there's been times where I wear my rubber boots. To get all the way down into it, so I know that there is definitely a water issue with that property.
Thank you full time. I'm doing carefully, I live at nine two nine North Harrisville Road. Linda brought up the floodplain map, if you do pull it up on the B M A. Fifty percent of this lot is designated. With outface flood elevation, special flood hazard area. So that's a huge thing for development and the rest of the lot is also designated annual chance of flood hazard. So that's something serious to look at. Looking at the city code, A one zone is specifically low density. For areas where there's going to be high water tables and limited public access. This is a perfect example of why that's A one. If you change it to zone ten, or ten. It's a ten thousand square foot lot, quarter of the size, right, that's super dense compared to all the surrounding properties right there. And it's for typical neighborhoods sharing frontage, local roads and having all necessary utilities. And access, so by definition in the code. This should stay A one and not be changed to our end.
Good evening, my name is Crystal Woolsey, I live at nine two nine North Harrisville Road. Those were my babies walking their lambs down the street. I grew up in Harrisville, I had full childhood, moved away when I got married, we moved back about thirteen years ago. So I've lived on North Harrisville for thirteen years. I'm really concerned about the water mitigation issues. That, um, parcel has multiple springs on it, not just one. There's, uh, at least three that I personally know of, and I'm not an old great, uh, timer. Uh, I noticed that there is a, in that plot map, there is a subdivision that is also. Planning to attach to that where it holds sacks, there's another spring at that corner. So there's water coming in areas that's there all the time. Five or six of us flood irrigate, all of our water goes down to that. We have no way of mitigating where our floodwater goes after us and we're talking about. At least fifteen hours straight. Of our water. Flowing past our properties. Um. I'm also concerned about those future residents. They don't know how those builders. Have built their house. They, those future residents would have no idea the kind of water, the sources that they are getting into. Um, they wouldn't know when they go to purchase that property until, um. It's looked at that they would have to buy enough flood insurance, that's a significant increase for somebody to buy them. Uh, that possibly those type of people wouldn't be able to afford. If you're buying a property that's that small. Um, so I'm concerned about those future people also. I also am a little scared about changing that A one, we have very little A one. And I don't want to change the precedence of what my property is and all the properties that touch me. That's a concern for me. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, one more try. Sean Douglas again. So I heard in the last one, as you went against the local residents in that area, by the A1. You said that it wasn't continuous. When you look at this zone, this area is continuous with A1. It's historically been used that way. So it'll be interesting to see how you look at this one when you say you're for A1. And see how you treat this property that's surrounded by A1 that does need to be A1 requirements and that has a lot of use of A1. So thank you. Thank you.
My name is Vicki Anderson and I live in, I'm eleven, North Harrisville Road. And I will tell you that a week ago, there was a leak going down in that property and I could see it from my kitchen window. And as long as, when there's water and when it starts to thaw, there's water laying down there. But I also have a sink because according to this, you didn't put houses right up along my fence line down at the bottom. We have large animals and I don't just have one or two. Are they gonna be, is there gonna be something that's put between me and that these houses so that I don't have to worry about kids walking through my pasture and getting kicked by a horse? Or are you gonna come back in and tippie? I have to get rid of my ants because it's inconvenient to these people that you build. You fight against my fence. My biggest concern really is the water there. You need to look into it. Like you've heard all of my neighbors, there's water laying down there and anybody that tells you there isn't, just take a walk. All of you. Thank you.
Give them two more minutes and we can postpone. Anyone else? No, I think we'll do it. So we do second almost. Well, on paper, five, five and a half. When people commenting about only one access, there are two accesses. This property and this development of that's four hundred north. So it will go between North Harrisville Road and four hundred north. With the road full. So with, with that, just trying to ask a question with regards to that. So would those, those entrances be, would be, uh, uh, accessing those entrances or exits from North Harrisville Road or from an, from another location?
So the property will have a road connected to North Harrisville Road. And that road, as you can see on here, that top section, that's at North Harrisville Road. And down at the south end of this, that's four hundred north, where it dead ends. So this property will connect into four hundred north. So that, that road will run between North Harrisville Road and four hundred north.
Okay, so the, a lot of the, some of the traffic is gonna be eliminated. Everybody going on North Harrisville Road.
Yes. Anyway, as far as that goes, there are two access points. And I just wanted to point that out, that that main road does connect those two. To start, I think the next thing I will start with is the, um, the open space in the middle where we're proposing and have a regional retention basin, which will be a massive flood control measure. So.
How, how big is that area?
There are twelve acres that are preserved open space. There's twelve acres. Of the thirty-seven acres, twelve of those are going to be maintained as open space. And due to the city, so the city can develop and maintain that section and take their a lot of the area that had the water, as far as where the floodplain maps are, which we have in our packet as well. So there are a few areas of wetlands that they're proposing to move, which could be difficult if they are jurisdictional. Any other? Any other? We move into our discussion on this.
I'm interested. Do we have a developer? Bureau?
Did you hear from you on fourth, share a little bit more and, but they're not really addressed. So the water issue we've heard.
Yeah, my name's Craig North. Good evening. Do you want me to shoot with questions or?
Oh, just tell us what you're considering, introduce a little bit of what you're doing and how the water plays into it. I'm sure you're aware that's a big part of this parcel.
Sure, sure. So I had a aquatics engineer analyze the wetlands and then floodplain engineer for engineering firm. Analyze the floodplain and designed around the specifications that they gave us in Jake. And then in addition to that, seeing the, I mean, the construction drawings, total part of this packet. I guess maybe I shouldn't reference hell, but we have yard drains in the in each, in the rears of each yard, uh, that will connect into the storm drain system, uh, and eventually end up into that large detention basin.
So it would help the future residents to have a way to deal with the water.
Sure, the drainage. And the way the elevation lays out, uh, most of that first phase is roughly three to four feet above the native ground. So the back of the curve, we're talking two and a half to three feet above where the native ground sits. Um, so we're not gonna likely be going into the native soil at all. Enough to scrape it, set the home, uh, and build up from there.
So no basements proposed to, to slab on the ground?
Yes, yeah. There's some places where a crawl space or maybe a daylight basement might be necessary where the road is high enough, but that wouldn't be digging down into the native. That would be more building up from the native than we gotta fill the yard to match the curb elevation. But, um, we try to keep all, or we did keep all of the, all of the lots and building paths uh, out of that floodplain elevation and above that. That's why the shape of the subdivision is the way it is.
So when you talk about putting drains in people's backyard, how much water could that potentially hold? So if we have a year that's excessively wet, we what?
Or we have the neighbors flood irrigating onto their backyards.
That's a good question. I don't wanna give any capacity number and, and be wrong.
Right.
I have to run that by the engineer.
From the north end of that, you've got people there flood irrigating and don't have a way to stop that water as it goes past the fence.
Sure.
So. That's all your concerns. Got other questions? And so it looks like we'll be aligning four hundred north. Do we have to talk to North, to Ogden City about that?
We have had that conversation with Ogden City and as part of the recommended motion, should the commissioners decide to recommend approval, that will be required for the formal application to be made to Ogden City for their review process. But the developers worked with Ogden City and we've been in contact with Ogden City about that connection, uh, related to that redesign is the fact that North Street is on Wasatch Front Regional Council to connect from the mountain road all the way to the freeway. So we've aligned that road to come back into Harrisville because their master plan shows that connection.
Boom, about. Houses that are currently walking in.
And what, what are the run with this? And when that project happens, that, that will be addressed. But that's the reason for the redesign of the connection to North Street is because we are to plan includes that connection.
And that application is into Ogden City. We've addressed their engineering criteria multiple times. And so they're finally using that.
Do you know the wetlands you're planning on removing are jurisdictional or what the status of the wetland is?
Yes, they are, uh, followed by for a fee in lieu of mitigation. So it's actually have the acreage to a minimal size. Um, and so that permitted also in. But obviously that approval will pull out on that area. It would be contingent, turns out, of this, yeah.
Right. I was wondering, do those houses that are right on top of those sections?
Which is identified in the master development agreement. And, and maybe if you don't mind me chiming in, sorry, correct me, but regarding the confusion about the rezone, but this is a rezone allocation, but some remains the same. It's got a
Just a cluster on A1.
It's got a master development agreement that was included. And, and the master development agreement includes an excluded development area until those areas are mitigated. The city won't allow building in floodplain, wet, protecting the wetlands until it will be appropriate. Omar, Lamar, or the, or the community signs off.
Have you noticed their master development agreement references West Point City and all places?
Oh, that would be the CCNRs. Sorry. That will be, um, the actual development agreement, which is not, but maybe one of the exhibits.
Depending.
Yeah, they get that correction.
We had a concern about the farming next door. And there is a right to farm notice that goes out to people saying you're going to have farm land next to you. And they have priority for all of their activities. I'm sure the neighbor would have a fence that prevents them from wandering onto pasture. That.
Thank you for testing that. And we just adopted that subdivision permits to protect A1s.
And here in section two point two. I don't know, figure it was new package, but that has that right to farm community thinking. And questions for the developers? Do you want them to sit back down?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Jenny, do you have anything else related to the public concerns that we've heard?
Thank you for covering all the inputs that I have down online, but I can't be done. Any questions from the future story or discussion? If you have additional information you want, that would be.
I like that this rendering doesn't have the, we wrote, well, parcel that the last one did. Cause there was one last time we saw this parcel going up, but Heather one of the lots had wrote on three sides. Except so. But it's nice to see that that's done. They'll have a lot of questions per se. What is the city planning on dealing with the part that the city is going to develop? What are we thinking for that?
So anything in the floodplain, obviously we're trying to mitigate with the regional retention basin. The city, we're anticipating the costs associated with that region basin. It's a good spot for us to collect excess water in the city because of all things that were mentioned, the city. And so our plan is to that, there are areas outside of that. We will take the park impact fees collected and create a park for the, the community and others to enjoy. I think a public, a public park. So there's a couple of areas identified on the plan that won't be allowed to be developed because of that. Those will be maintained by the city.
Justin, how big is a regional retention basin?
So as far as capacity is, Craig said, I, I don't wanna get into the engineering categories, but essentially what we engineer to is to the hundred year storm. Again, doesn't mean that it's the biggest storm of the next hundred years. It just means that it takes a percentage of, of all the hundred years average of the storm, how much we can hold back. Um, a similar sized basin, we would consider a regional basin is the one at Independence Park.
Okay.
Is a regional basin.
Okay.
So again, very, very
Bigger than your general.
Yes. And again, we will have control structures. We're always future understanding that we will receive help from other agencies as things go on. That the piping under the, the actual increase in size and mitigate floodplain just on that itself alone. And, um, not to say there's not water down there, but also as per Utah state law, um, it is that if you have irrigation water on your property, you need to maintain that on your property or have the ditch system on your property to then exit off into a certain area. So again, that, that is by state law. It's, it's very different. It's hard for a lot of old farm communities to quite get that, but it's also, it is part of, you know, you can't flood out your neighbor in any other way.
Right, thank you, thank you.
I actually did go down to the bottom on Monday and, um, I know that area fairly well and I will tell you this, um, the water is a huge concern. I don't know what the water table is, but it's gotta be above ground because there's too much water. There's way too much water. Building a structure on that land makes no sense to me. And I'll, I'll be the one to say, hey, I went down, I went and I looked, um, I know the property, I know the property behind your house, I know the property behind your house and your house and your house. And it makes no sense to me. But that's that's because I, I know, I mean.
Right. So if they mitigated the water as they're suggesting, would that help you feel any better?
Well, for me, I think on farmer's terms, retention means to hold. Okay, there's nowhere for that water to go. That it's, the water table is too high. I just, I just don't see that. And, and I don't know, Justin, do we know what the water table depth is?
Again, as the, as was stated with the PMA floodplain study, there is no base flood elevation in that area. They haven't done a study to tell us what the base flood elevation will be. To mitigate that, they will determine that and then we will have an understanding. Again, part of that water, as we know, is Dixon Creek, hasn't been taken care of, maintained. Part of that, the Dixon Creek will have to get a stream alteration permit, be maintained, get cleaned out. Again, there, there's a lot that goes into it. It's not just a plug, plug in and play type of development. But with infrastructure, stormwater, upsizing of pipes, things of that nature, things can be mitigated. Not saying it's not a wet area because I know it is. I've very much seen and dealt with that area. But again, I also know there were some manmade ponds through that, through that area over the years with previous owners, like how, how it might go. But in fact, and again, I don't know exactly what all the little screens are. There are screens in multiple places throughout Harrisville, North Ogden, all this end of Weaver County.
Right.
And they, they somehow, you know, through land drain systems and, and things as they come up and develop can get mitigated.
What is the city's reasoning behind?
The recommendation. Certainly the water is definitely a concern. Uh, it's hard to get into the weeds with the water before we require a full approved, uh, set of plans. Which comes in the next stage with the improvements. There is no part of subdivision ordinance that allows them to skirt our water. It's required before we do any type of approvals for subdivision, before the building exists. The It's required before we do any type of approvals for subdivision, before the building process, the.
And we're not gonna set people.
The, the master development agreement, talking about today, is very much to allow the developer to move forward. All the same requirements are having to be met through that process. Unlike a mixed use development where we require all of that upfront before you make the zoning change. This is not required in cluster development, it's hard for the city to hold the developer to regulations that are not in code. We can't, if they, if they're application code, then we have, we have to let it move forward. But we certainly don't have to allow people to build in areas that would be a hazard in the future, and our subdivision ordinance outlines what those requirements are. And as was mentioned by the developer, he's begun says with FEMA, like these are my four engineers, and he's hired the appropriate experts in those fields to address how that will look. Uh, we've identified areas in the MDA that we've been allowed development to go. Said that the, our subdivision ordinance has to be met for that we could do that building. It was hard to get into the weeds about improvement drawings and knowing exactly where the flows are and the capacities when we haven't required that yet.
Okay, so I mean, it's it sounds like there's going to be a significant effort on the part of the developer to make sure the water issues are mitigated and taken care of. Um, barring any kind of catastrophe in terms of total water. Um, but there are certain, like Jenny was saying, there are certain requirements that have to be met legally uh, according to our statute and so forth, that, um, before they can even build. Um, and so I, I hear what people are saying. I, I hear what you're saying about the beauty of a place, you know, the, the challenge, you do. One of the things that I think you, you can certainly appreciate is that, um, the state of Utah is growing really fast. And, um, growth is moving north. And what I've said for years is we can either get out ahead of this sort of thing and make sure. But we do not, I want you to know, we do not allow developers to walk all over us. But we don't, and, and you may be skeptical, but if you've been on my end where we've been in discussions for years about you can't do this, but you might be able to do this, and then they come back and there's iteration after iteration, change after change. Because we want to make sure that, that Harrisville is taken care of, that the citizens are taken care of as much as possible. But we have to get out of, get of the change because it's coming. And, um, we could either do it in a way that's going to be meaningful and look beautiful to our city, or we can get stuck in situations where it's not the way we would want it to be. Uh, cause people do have a right to use their land. Uh, we just have to make sure that it's done in a way that will, that will be a blessing to Harrisville. That's what I'd say it, so it, it's a challenge. Growth is, is a challenge, development is a challenge. Um, but it's something that we're, we're really trying to be mindful of because, um, I, I want my family to be able to have places to visit, walk, recreate, to endure the city. And, and I don't want to change for that reason. Uh, uh, we've been here for almost thirty years now, and when we first moved in, it was not uncommon to see pheasants walking up and down the road and flying around, but I, I haven't seen a pheasant in years. Um, so I, I know that there are some downfalls to development, uh, but I also know that there's some blessings to it as well.
We just said, we, I do like losing the A1 feel there, but that third of that property is being preserved as part of the cluster, which is what clusters are for, is to preserve that open space.
Right, well, the other thing with that too, Chad, is, you know, the governor said it's weak, I believe, that if small, the cities in state don't start to allow smaller development, smaller lots and smaller homes, they'll force the city's hands. And we don't want to get in that position to where we're being forced by state government to make our decisions for us. And we've had these discussions back and forth, we just approved a cluster subdivision just off of seven hundred. Um, just a few months ago, and went back and forth with that and made sure that we did it right. We tabled it the first time and made sure that we did it the best we could for the residents in that area, and we'll do the same on anything like this. But the reality of Harrisville right now is, I've got an eighteen year old son who will turn from a mission in two years. And if he wanted to buy a house in five years in Harrisville, there's not a lot to buy. And there's certainly not a lot to buy under five hundred thousand dollars. So we have to realize that, and if we want our families to maintain living in Harrisville and to be here, we've got to have some of these types of developments that can be affordable for younger families. We want to continue to have our families raise their families here, and without these types of subdivisions, it makes it very, very difficult. Uh, and that's why we go to work, we go to to make sure that they're beautiful, that the homes are up to standard. Um, and, and so I, I hope you guys realize that we, we don't just look at things as an A1 or a, or an A2 decision. Uh, we make sure that we do it right because we want it to be right for two reasons, for the residents that are here right now, and for residents we hope to retain in the future. And that's a big part of what we look at when we look at these subdivisions, and we definitely don't want our children to have to move outside of the city if they don't want to, and, and right now, that's really what we're seeing. They're either buying a townhome or they're going somewhere else, because there's frankly not a lot of places for them to go. So that's, that's a benefit of a community in a subdivision like this. Yeah, do we love the idea? Not necessarily, do we love the smaller lots? Maybe we don't, but it's what has to happen to make them.
I mean, can I say something? You know, to, uh, have a public hearing, and the, the tenant plan not say a left area, and the tenant plan definitely shows that.
That was the previous one, we're not in a public hearing at the moment. A public meeting is a good, yeah. Well, if you're questioning. Trying to think how else, since this would be broken up, this is thirty seven acres, if it all stayed A1 and developed A1. I'm trying to envision it, they don't, I don't know that that works either.
So there's a couple of things going on here for bonus density that gets us to the fifty eight lots. There are cluster development, so if you remember from our last discussion.
Yeah, and I saw the bonus density calculation too.
So it conflicts itself in code, and when code conflicts itself, it. Our code in A1 specifies a lot development by forty thousand square feet, but if you're aware, an acre property is more than forty thousand square feet. But it's hard for this city to say that you need to have more than what code says in, in A1's lot. So there's a little bit of density given there because there's not, um, it, it's not accurate to what the acre lot means.
Right.
Uh, calculation is. The second thing is our cluster development ordinance doesn't specify that you have to take out roads or other areas before you calculate the density.
Right.
And so the density is calculated on the totality of A1, which not after they put the road structure then what's left, and then calculate that density there. So again, that is in favor of the applicants, but some of these things can be corrected, but as our ordinance stands today, and as our legal council gave us an invitation earlier, it, we find in favor of the applicants.
Right.
That doesn't say that the MDA maximum fifty eight units will be allowed to be built. Because they have to mitigate all of these things and answer a bit, and they still have to meet the, the set of requirements. Some density that's, I don't, in the MDA, but that number may change, but things can't be mitigated, it seems can't be met the way that they're supposed to. They wouldn't be allowed to build that number, that's just the cap. So there's a couple of things going on there, but that cluster development workings, the commissioners can decide the, the staff direction, that way, to, the commissioner rates point, but the governor's highly interested in jokes that are to increase housing.
Right, we're going with the cluster. Even if we change some things, it'd still be an RE fifteen, which is a lot more dense than the A1. And it's a decent sized park that you could put at least those thirty seven lots in there on the acre, that's more than half of this could be developed A1 with yard, I just don't, somebody's gonna have an acre of floodplain and not a place to build a house if you do that. Um, and so this preserves that open space, makes it a public open space that the entire city can go use rather than just someone's backyard that they can't use because it's always underwater. And allows us to mitigate the floodplain and work when how the flood that backs up the railroad tracks helps us get our hundred north through.
Does this go through?
Well, can we rule, we don't.
What is, what is the plan likely help? When is that ruled?
What can I go through that anymore?
Well, that wasn't necessarily a discussion I intended to have tonight. Uh, but it might be of interest to those that are here, certainly something that has been brought to the city's attention. Uh, in the, the recent months, UTA has purchased the property that is on the southwest corner of the city. Uh, they have intentions of widening the Pacific right away to bring front runners from Ogden City all the way to Brooklyn City.
Right.
We know that they are acquiring property right now to make that happen. Uh, what we don't know is what their exact intentions are. We do know that they carry a lot more weight with Union Pacific than any developers that eat. And if they want to increase the culverts that are causing floodplain in this area, they will have more talk than anybody to, that we have to make that happen. Uh, we do know that North Street is on the lot that's from the regionals council's master plan for connectivity to the freeway. And we, we'd be amiss of our responsibility that we didn't consider that with future development and actions.
And where that processes with railroad tracks, we just put things under the road to get there.
Exactly, and, and what their, their, I don't speak for UTA, I wouldn't speak for UTA, we just know they purchased that property. We know they have a plan with some type of a substation to service the VDO. Whether that lands in Harrisville or lands in Ogden City, we don't know. Uh, but we just know that they asked us to be mindful of that connection, uh, because they can't share the trucks with Union Pacific.
Right.
And that's related but unrelated, but where the experience goes going.
Right.
We, we have.
Pretty cool.
All of that information is in consideration.
It can relate to what's going to do because that that and the regional basin, which is, compared to other retention basins would help mitigate a lot of that flooding, help the area be usable, help it be open to the public, help that open space.
So that's a good point, thank you for pointing that out, any protections that we can put in place, one, development to maintain that space? Because the moderate from housing requirements for mass transit aren't significantly different than A1 zone.
Right. And so as much as it goes up next to it, then we have a major transit corridor there.
Exactly.
Putting this in ahead of that helps us not have even been there.
They can't require the identity housing in areas that are, that are our.
Yeah.
Yep.
Whereas if we let it wait until there's a train station there.
Definitely.
So it's a really cool, real.
Yes, not a discussion that I intended to have tonight, more of a general plan related, that would be part of the picture. But it is related, and then you ask what the future connectivity North Street is, so I hope you know that's not a push from staff. Doesn't change our initial recommendation, it's just more information that we're aware of.
We need some more for city residents too. So you know what's coming down the pipeline. Progress is moving north, it's just unavoidable.
I'm not getting traffic, but thirty seven lots, they give a traffic, so they can that. Brad, what's your, do you?
Let me point out another concern from the residents, um, oh. Traffic. Right, we heard several times, we don't want sidewalks. Um, I do think that there yes, I understand that the traffic has increased in size, it seems like it got good cutoff to avoid eighty nine for some weird reason, I don't see the sense of it, but it does happen.
If I don't change this half the time.
Right, so, you know, also too, you know, I, I take into consideration of protecting the existing residents along that due to traffic increase. You know, I've watched those labs being walked up the road, I've watched, I don't even know where, I think the guy lives down on Wall somewhere, but there's an old by Carroll that rides up and down that street, and it's one of the coolest things you ever see, and that will come to an end because of the track. Um, I, I am, yeah.
So is that traffic, is that traffic going to occur regardless of whether we approve this subdivision or not?
It is gonna occur, it, yes, but it's also gonna increase. You take, if, if you take fifty eight homes, typically you have two vehicles.
Right.
That's gonna increase, you have two more vehicles going up and down that road.
Right, who knows? They're like with the issues that North Cars and the Road is already experiencing, wouldn't they want to come out of four hundred north to access down that way?
Sure.
Waddings, and so that would create some of the existing traffic by allowing them to go this way instead of.
But I will also, you know, the ease of coming off the wall to tire two, come eighty nine and be down until the dolions, you can say that, so. Yeah, I'm concerned over that as well.
Yeah, okay, let's see, so of course, you know, Union two, there will be there'll be a lot of, a lot of traffic. More traffic.
Anyway, there will be a lot in this traffic, especially with most of the homes of itself, and they're going to be using four hundred north more than they are Harrisville.
It's not very direct.
Someone that connects however that takes. There'll be a lot of people taking that out to the freeway to commute and such, so there'll be a lot more traffic on four hundred north with another connection, but without going with the cluster development, they could put thirty seven lots on there, which is more than half of this, and that would bring traffic too. I'm not looking at keeping it as one farm for thirty seven acres.
So like we said, we can wait till it's a major transit district and they can put, yeah, homes and apartments, and I don't want that ways like that, but I don't want to wait for that either, so.
Yeah.
So they'll send us to city council and see what they have to say.
I mean, when we talk about traffic, right, well, it's down homes and particles. It's more, it's, it's only gonna be worse, so.
Yeah, it's. Right. Yeah, even if it doesn't go there. Even if it doesn't, there, there's still gonna be traffic down there, because everywhere else in Harrisville, for us. There are people unfamiliar with that light right up here, and they don't get it to turn for them. I sit behind those people all the time, they don't pull up to the right spot, the right angle, and it just doesn't, sends them and it doesn't turn. And so that's why they're maybe more Harrisville route is to get around that way, so, you know, and if I'm coming south, I mean, they have highway exits right there, and come straight and draw right across, and I just have to door, but that run, we all went twenty seven.
So interesting.
Oh.
I mean, I'm curious. I think, I think we have enough information to make a
make a, all of the recommendations, we ready for the other thing that once you make it, are you ready?
I, I think we've had a really, really good discussion, you know, brows, and you really good that ultimately will be a benefit to our citizens.
Right. Already, very sure, thank you.
Uh, I motions um, for the approval Um, for the approval. And recommend ordinance five 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 cluster development plan. For the property located in six and three north Harrisville Road. Uh, including staff memo dated May first. Uh, and so I, my motion to approve this ordinance.
I'm motioning there in a second.
Are you minded that I need that to include their line of Austin City?
Yes, and I amend my motion to include any and all requirements that are due to city.
Also, I have that motion. Motion saying, all in favor?
Hi, hi, hi.
Opposed?
Nay.
This will go on city council. So you'll have some time over the next couple of weeks.
Really?
Next week.
Next week, so if there are additional comments, concerns that you have. We would encourage you to come in, share that, write something and send it into the city. Uh, and then the city council will look at that before their meeting.
Takes us on to number seven. Which is discussion and action on a conditional use permit number one forty three. An application for a preschool business located approximately twenty two sixty four north, six hundred west. Kenny, do you want to introduce this before we have the applicant count forward?
Absolutely, thank you, cheers. So the city received an application on April twenty first. For a conditional use permit for a home occupation at approximately twenty two sixty one, six hundred west, which is zone. Uh, in accordance with Harrisville Municipal Code eleven dot ten dot zero two zero nine. A, the conditional use permit is required to be stated. The application is for preschool for up to ten children. For two preschool sessions twice a week on Tuesdays and Thursdays. Preschool hours would be an AM session from nine fifteen. To eleven forty five AM and a PM session from twelve fifteen to two forty five PM. And included in the staff memo are the basis conditions that condition uses for your review.
Applicant here, please come forward and tell us a little more about what you're planning to do.
Yeah, just waiting for. I am Telly Chelton, I am looking to open an in-home preschool. I have an edu- education major, and it is time now to fulfill my dream of opening a preschool. What else do you want to?
So. Where are people parking? How many cars are these ten kids going to have?
Yeah.
Is it going to be a nuisance to your neighbors? That sort of.
Perfect, well, for that, I will have the parents park on these, kind of sit under it. For safety concerns, I do ask that the parents will present and block their child to a janitorial door. That we can also watch the other kids that are being picked up or dropped off. Um, as far as that, the road is wide enough for parking on both sides without any conflict with. Where it is, um, along with that, it will be in my basement, in my living room space.
Percentage of your house to the taken? Some twenty nine percent?
Cause we have four bedrooms in there, also, so it'd be.
So just mainly your, your downstairs family area?
This is one of my favorites, so I'm seeing a lot of you.
Yeah, when the, some of the interesting facts, and so we have, it's six hundred is a main thoroughfare. It has when they, when they built that road north of twenty three hundred and twenty five fifty. And so we have buses, busing kids, I mean, so one of the nice things about this is your preschool will start after.
Exactly.
After the busing of the, of the junior high and high school kids is, is over. And then your, um, your afternoon session will end after. The buses have come, for the most part, right? Uh, and so having cars just for a short period of time to drop and pick kids off. Uh, I don't see being a huge issue that way, um, and it is only gonna be for a short period.
Isn't this one of the, and, um, home occupations that allows employees from outside? Or is that?
Right, so will it just be?
There will be myself for it, and if I need to, then we'll look at that. Size is, I hope that people want a lot to come, but you know. As far as that, that's why I'm looking ten, and this would be my first year teaching, so maybe that's too much. And for state code, it did say from nine to fourteen with supervisory, so with that, I'm right in there.
So you're not planning on having other employees at this site then?
Where this is preschool, will there be food preparation?
It will be snacks that are free, are set for it. How that looks, I may provide them, I may ask my students to provide them, whatever that looks like, but it will be. So.
You don't need to have your chance.
I do not.
We can solve it, yeah, interior, we can go just down the street, and I can't see that actually. It would be a problem.
What sort of thing? See any other concerns? Many, one other besides from the city, I didn't see any of the staff, but we're sold.
As long as compliance and level occupation from this.
And all the concerns from the commissioner, I think we're ready to. If you don't mind, I'll make that motion. Through conditional use permit number one forty three preschool business located approximately twenty two sixty four north, six hundred west. I'll second that. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you.
Yeah, fifteen day appeal period, so Danny will explain more details before he.
As unlikely, but try, did you receive an appeal then? Assuming there's no. Appeal then in fifteen days. And you gave us that date of May twenty third.
Then moves us on to agenda item number eight. Which is the second action recommended to grant preliminary plat approval. For some views phase one located in approximately one twelve five west, eleven hundred north.
Absolutely, you're very familiar with this, we've been talking about this for quite some time. And we're excited that tonight we'll be able to talk about preliminary plat of the. Of phase, um, comment views subdivision. This is an engineer's panel from the state engineer. The, the phase includes seventeen household units and six single family units. And the main couple from way through the property and stuff for the future street connections in the subsequent phases. So the only conditions that the city engineers require for plat approval. Is to submit the plat to the community surveyor's office for their review and receive their approval. Including their signature lock, addressing the whole. Provided for the engineers. And including any arrangements for drainage, sewer irrigation on the plat. This stuff wrote that East and West intersects some, less than a city standard. So he's requesting a, the road connection or obtain approval for there, it's from the administrative use authority.
Which angle is that?
It, I believe is this and. On the. This.
Close that one.
Purple, I believe, it's his comment, let me zoom out.
Essentially the extension of wall and way. The angle, he still doesn't.
So, someone, the school's.
So, this angle that he's identified here in this comment is the one that he's concerned with. And the last. Is to, the last two items are to obtain approval from Northview Fire for the turner. And then provide lot addresses on the plat. That they will supply to city engineers, so any approval. Uh, for stage gap.
Concerns from the commissioners on this one? Okay, I'll move into approve the plat for some view phase one, located approximately one twelve five west, one hundred. I'll say, so in favor?
Hi, hi. You know, he said, yeah, we've seen.
And then that just says, I'm sorry, explain that here, send that to city engineers. Memo.
I'm gonna be hot and heavy us for two hours, I never think.
We start the voting, all in favor of this amendment?
Well, let's, let's make sure we've included everything that we need to, we mentioned the city. And usually on my most staff, so we sweeten ours, all of those things. We've got all of that in.
And.
Yes, I said this.
All in favor? Alright, that brings us up to agenda item number one, which is public comments. This is your opportunity to talk to us, tell us about anything you want. We're up to three minutes.
My name is Matthew Trump, um, how I live at one one wall, sorry, what was your first name?
Matthew.
Matt, right? Uh, we live at one one wall, it's over at the end of wall, as it is now. Um, I see a phase of nature, which obviously gets them in the ground going, um. I haven't seen anything, yeah, that's too how the future connection will only extend to occur. Yeah, that's not being considered, yeah, you guys have, do you guys have?
It holds on that is to, yes.
Yeah, what, what's a phase two? Straight, straight through.
Yes, it's likely to have that discussion with them afterwards, they've showed phase two and. Be this discussion with them.
Do you want my name again?
Yeah.
Sure, Paul Davis, thank you for that. You're welcome. I just a, a question about, or, uh, let's see, runoff water, where would that go?
This is the time for you to tell your opinions that were not a nice question.
Just make sure that there's, I will, I will tell you what my feelings are then. My feelings are is that they don't go into the western irrigation. That they shouldn't, they should not go there, yes. So if you have any runoff going in there, that, that would probably be a showstopper, I think.
You think that it's, wouldn't handle this?
It's, it's. Any question answered session before, we'll consider it, yeah. Okay, good, thank you for your comment. Yep. Anyone else? Who was public comment and received agenda item number ten, which is commission and staff, oh. You have follow up for us?
I don't have any follow up this month, because I believe everybody's, um, signed it and.
I mean, it's not chat.
Follow up that we have.
As the city council, so there's.
Many of them have. That's in the voting, I have the questions for staff.
Um, you know, there's the wipes. Yeah, so let's. So what is the thing frame that they have to get that rid for they?
What you don't sign, yes. Thank you, Justin.
As well, UDOT Highway eighty nine project starts tomorrow. It will post encumber all of the veteran acts that are not up to standard and code. Um, then they will move on to the second phase, some of the removal of the median. About a hundred feet. No, coming out of Harrisville Road. Long Harrisville Road. Um, on the south end, they're removing a hundred feet of that median. They're also removing the inside median of the left turn pocket here at the Charter School. Um, then they will start at a mill down and overlay, and that will all be night work. Their drop their completion date is September thirtieth. And so by September thirtieth, the whole project will be completed. Uh, so there has to be a good one. Right now, should be, for the Ben Lemon Development, should be starting a great program next week. Um, and they're pushing a month timeline. And you know that, that's, that's very impressive.
New group of city.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. You're using specific highway eighty nine.
It's highway major. Highway eighty nine from Wall Avenue to twenty seven. Now there. Again, all the, all the land locations will be in the night. So they will have reopened. There may be, there are some soft spots that they will do for X, excavation out. Essentially right up here at the North Harrisville Road entrance. The western entrance, the entrance of some special. So that will be a pretty big undertaking and will take quite a nights. Very, very what the other issues, the failureings and walking scores. Again, I'm gonna grab to Brian, yeah, again.
I'm sure the kids will be very upset if they're late.
The UDOT project, they're coming to us from, perhaps, natures. Until after school at night. Because again, they know they're going to be very much directly affect Greenwood. Everything that connects eighty nine to. Like Iowa City, okay? So again, they're very mindful, they, they will have a public transportation officer. To then call, they will also send information through us. We will post everything that we get from them via our social media app. Our social media and our city website, based on things on the city. Again, they're, they're actually, this is. When they read it Washington last year, they actually get us a lot more praise of what's going on eighty nine right now. Than they ever did on. So, it's been a lot better relationship with UDOT, but we can't help.
While you're up there, um. With the, the new office buildings and, and stuff going in for the city on seven fifty, and we're talking UDOT on eighty nine. Can you persuade them to change the lighting, the light at eighty nine and seven fifty? To balance it out a little bit, cause the traffic on seven fifty will increase.
Hi.
You, you can't get two vehicles on seven fifty through that intersection. On one red, on one, you probably explore it, right? It's crazy.
Bring it up to them, I know. The lighting pattern will change as, as soon as we get our light infrastructure up.
Is there a timeline on that, or has your public works building yet?
My public works is slow, one is, is been the real detriment to this right now. Um, we're probably five weeks behind schedule for my completion, uh, January one. I'll be getting some tighter, um, but again. Just because the public works building is in, doesn't mean that roadways going to be all the way through, and until we have essential. Until either the capacity at that moment. Until either the capacity at that moment. Or we have essential emergencies. Services on that. The light won't be it.
And I tell them, no, I didn't have change.
Yeah.
And that's a fair question. I travel that road when I'm in town. I'm on that road three or four times a day and you can see progress on this building every time I run. It's so fun to watch that because it's changing.
Well, hopefully by most people have four. And then. Now thirty four walls, that will be all we'll set here. So again. Have one minor, one day that we do, uh, not a full closure, but a flag closure. To do our white outside room. But it probably won't be till around July. Make sure we get more. And again, there will be a flag closure, there will be a full closure, but there will be traffic still here together. Again, any other developments you have questions on? As I said, Ben Lomond's moving forward on the sewer. Hopefully they just continue to run with that and and get that development.
But you already have an update on all the Walmart and Walmart going through.
Yeah, um, right now Dixon Creek. Is the one out on the highway that's the closest. Walmart, um, that's in right now. And again, that is, we've had multiple. Uh, meetings with C D Smith, which is the FEMA's engineering side with the developers engineering side. So we're really close to having that finalized and then. All that work with that development is on phase two. They're ready right now. We just did an approval today. Um, who started in a pre-construction meeting in the phase one. So we'll see that come in. They'll finalize it probably in the next sixty day window of the floor monitor. For phase two, and I will write in phase two and get Dixon Creek.
Somewhat under control.
Get, get that moving from the north end and then. Uh, like I said, as far as any others like golf course or that, they're very in subsequent phases. So we'll see that when, when models come in, but essentially if we can get. Phase two A and two B in. Which is the two thousand is final. And the road connects two thousand and eight or nine. Yeah, then that's, that's our big push right now for, for Ben. Um, then, you know, as you can all see there are. Basically, I've got a street in Ashland. We're just running forward a lot of movement. And things. Pushing forward. It's working through.
Right. Thank you. Okay, so. I'll say, I almost. Trying to make that motion.